Hey everybody, Marcus C. Williams here. And I'm the chairman of the Rochester City Republican Committee. I'm also running for Rochester City Council this year. I'll be on the conservative line, anybody can vote for me, no matter what party they're in, Democrat, independent, Republican, whatever, you can vote for me on the conservative line November 4th. But I'm here to talk to you guys this evening about the continued negligence and disrespect of Rochesterians that city council shows. Every single day, they continue to fail and honestly refuse to address the issues that we are facing in our city. Crime is out of control, housing prices are ridiculous, you know, even whether you rent or you're trying to buy one. Then we have all of the other issues like the education system, the high energy costs, and the economy in our area, it's where are the jobs? You understand what I'm saying, the good paying jobs? You know, this is something that doesn't get addressed, but just the other night, our city council decided in their infinite wisdom that they wanted to make some amendments to our sanctuary city policies, okay? Now, I know many of you guys might look at what goes on on the federal level and be like, "Well, sanctuary city policies, I understand what's going on there." You might think that you understand what's going on with sanctuary city policies, but they snuck in a whole bunch of alphabet stuff into this sanctuary city policy. And they are trying to say, "Oh, well, it's about equality and stuff like that." It's not about equality, it's about separating our citizens and dividing our citizens into individual groups and providing certain groups with more rights than the rest of the whole. And for me, that is completely unacceptable. So we're gonna dive right into this, because a lot of people didn't even know that this was happening on city council, and I gotta be honest, this kinda crap up on me even though I try to do my best to stay up on what they're doing, it's just so much all the time. So hit the like button, hit the share button, share this on your page, and please donate to my campaign, you don't even have to be local to donate. Go on my website, MarcusTheNumber4Rochester.com, that's MarcusTheNumber4Rochester.com, because we have to fight these people and get them out of office. This bill was voted on nine to zero, and in a second here, you're gonna hear exactly why it's such a big problem, okay? So what I need you guys to understand is, city council is supposed to represent you. When they came out of their mouth the other night after they passed this law, they said, "This is what we as a city believe." No, it's not what we as a city believe, cuz I'm sure that they probably didn't talk to anybody that's listening to this. Did they go to the churches? They didn't go to the churches on this, I wonder why? Hmm, did they go to the black community and talk about this? No, they didn't go to the black community and talk about this. Did they go to the Puerto Rican community? Did they go to the Latino community? They didn't talk to them about this nonsense either. Because part of this law, when they're talking about sanctuary cities, they put in this law that grown men can be in the bathroom at city rec centers and at city pools and at city other places with little girls. That's right, this is what city council passed. And some people might be like, "Marcus, that's ridiculous, they would never do something like that." Oh yes, and it passed nine, zero. All of them need to be off of there, every single one of them need to be gone. And I don't care whether I like some of them or I don't like some of them. The fact that all of them voted for this needs to show us that they don't represent us. Now, I'm gonna read some of the text from the law that they passed, just because I don't want people to be like, "Oh, well, it doesn't say that." I'm gonna tell you exactly what it says, because it's absolutely repugnant. Now, right here, I'm gonna read this part here, and you're just gonna be completely, completely blown away. Like I was when I read it, I was like, "Oh my goodness, is this really what's going on?" So it begins, "It shall be unlawful due to discrimination for any person being the owner of a leasing proprietor, manager, superintendent, agent, employee of any public place, accommodation, resort, amusement, to directly or indirectly..." Now, that was already in the law, this is what they added in. What I'm about to read is what was added in, hit the like button and share this out. It says, "You can't deny access to a public bathroom," a public bathroom, "a locker room," a locker room, "a dressing room," dressing room, "or bathing facilities." Bathing facilities? Somebody really went out of the way to pull that one up, bathing facilities. "That is designated for a gender that is consistent with a patron's gender identity." It continues, "You cannot restrict the use of a single-use bathroom to a particular gender." So that means that if it's a men's bathroom, you can't say only men go in there, even if it says on the sign, "Only men." That means that if it says a women's bathroom, even though it says women's only, it means that men can go in the bathroom. See, now this is a very serious problem and we need to get this message out, so I need you to share this video, please. Share it on your page, share it on your friends' page, send it to other people in emails, put it on your X account, put it on your YouTube account, put it on Facebook, put it on everywhere. These people need to be put on blast for this insanity. Again, going back to specifically what it says in this law that city council just passed, and it's masquerading as a sanctuary city law, that's what the worst of it is, right? Like they put some stuff in there about illegal aliens, okay? I'm not so happy about that, you guys know how I feel. We should prioritize our citizens and immigrants and refugees, not illegal aliens, right? Cuz they didn't do it the right way, we'll talk about that later, but that's not the important part right here. The important part is that they said that this, it says, I'm reading it again for people who are just joining in, "You cannot deny access to a public bathroom, locker room, dressing room, or bathing facility that is designated for a gender that is consistent to a patron's gender identity or expression." So now, gender identity or gender expression, those are two separate things. So that means I could dress up in girl's clothes even if I don't believe that I'm a girl or a female in any way, and I can go in the girl's bathroom, I don't think that that's okay. That means that a six foot five, 290 pound man can go in the locker room with your six-year-old daughter. That means you can have a grown man taking a shower with your mother at the city pool. Hello, is anybody out there hearing me? Because this is what city council said, this is what they put in play. This is an actual law, you guys, this is what they put in, and I guarantee you that if you were watching this, they probably didn't consult you over it. Now, what the information that came out about it was, there were ten nonprofits, organizations that are funded by different nefarious means and people putting money in other people's pockets that push this, okay? And again, this is why we have to get this out, so share this everywhere. Because the fact that the city operates rec centers for children, and they're now saying that you have to let grown men, okay, in the bathroom with little girls is unacceptable, okay? And people will say, "Oh, well, this excuse and that excuse, or what about this or what about that?" It's not what about nothing, that's inappropriate, okay? That is the baseline of our society, like we have nothing. They've already taken Christ out of everything, they've taken the Lord, our Father, out of everything. Now they're trying to shred the basic common sense things that we have in our society, which is grown men that are not familiar to your children should not be in the bathroom with them in a public space, hello? Where is the protections for the children, for the young ladies, for the little girls? There is no protection, nobody thought about them, nobody cared about that, nobody. And the same goes vice versa, you know, we don't think of it as much, but if you've been following the news for the last couple of months, we've seen a whole bunch of women abusers coming out from all across the country that are abusing young underage men. And that's something that we don't ever talk about. But I figured that it's more easier for people to understand that some grown behind man doesn't have any business in a bathing area with your young daughter or your niece or your cousin. Can we make this make sense? Every single member of city council signed off on this unanimously, all nine of them, you guys. So this is why I'm telling you, I need your help this year. I'm running for city council, I need you to volunteer, I need your donations. Even if you're not local, you can donate, okay? Go on my website, MarcusTheNumber4Rochester.com, you can donate right on there. It is really simple, takes less than two minutes. There's even if you click the donation button, it'll tell you where you can send a check if you don't wanna donate online. I need your donations to stop this insanity. This is clearly against the will of the people, but they're telling us that that's what our city stands for, that that's what we as citizens stand for. I don't stand for that, and I'm not gonna sit by and sit for it either. Okay, I'm gonna stand up, I'm gonna speak up against this, and I'm working my darndest to make sure I win this election, but I need your help. These people are clearly anti-God, they're anti-human, and they're anti-common sense. And all I'm trying to do is make some sense out of the nonsense, because we deserve better. It's clear that they don't matter to us, that we don't matter to them, excuse me. Some people got some, making some comments, let's see. It's hard for me to read and see on the screen at the same time, I see your comment there. Okay, yeah, it's ridiculous, and you know, and people will say, "Oh, well, they won't be pedophiles." How do you know? How do you know? I'd love to pull up the list of people that are offenders in our city. If you actually knew how many child predators were in our city, you'd freak out. You'd freak out, but look it up, it's public information for the ones that already have cases on them. You'd freak out, okay? It's a real serious issue, and we need to talk about this. But worse than that, there is the grooming of children, and that's exactly what this is. This is the normalization, the getting the young girls and young boys to think that it's okay to be in these types of facilities with another sex or somebody that looks all discombobulated, okay? Like this is the stuff that they're pushing, right? The biggest concern that it is that I need to share with you is this concept of gender expression nonsense, okay? So gender expression means that you can dress however you want, right? It doesn't mean that that's the gender that you think that you are, it doesn't mean that that's the gender that you relate with, it doesn't mean any of that. It's you expressing the gender that you decided that you want to express. Then even worse on top of that is the gender identity nonsense, okay? As you know, as I'd like to point out, that didn't say anything about gay people, that didn't say anything about lesbians, that didn't say anything about homosexual males, that didn't say anything about bisexuals, did it? No, it said gender identity and gender expression, that's got nothing to do with them. That's got nothing to do with gay people, but it does have to do with gender ideology and those other things that are not actually about how your sexual orientation is, okay? It's about sexual perversion, okay, and nonsense. That's what it is, it's ideology that they're pushing, okay? It's not about homosexuality, because they didn't mention that at all right there. They mentioned gender identity. So you gonna tell me that a gay man don't know that he's a man? Stop it, you gonna tell me that a lesbian don't know that she's a woman? Like their whole concept of same-sex attraction is they are attracted to people of the same sex, right? So when we step away from that and we talk about gender identity, that's some nonsense that's made up, okay? Well, today I feel like a bird, it don't make you a bird, okay? Maybe you a bird, the other type of bird, y'all know the type, or a bird brain, but it don't make you a bird. This is a problem, people, gender expression, like you can't base things on that, okay? You're gonna have grown behind men in the bathrooms with little girls. We already have a very serious human trafficking problem in Rochester, which city council completely ignores. I try to bring it up at least once a month, cuz I can't even go as hard on the whole situation as I want to, and it's ridiculous, okay? And it's not even talked about, the amount of sexual assaults in our city is absolutely ridiculous, beyond compare ridiculous, and most of them don't even get reported, which is a whole nother separate conversation, okay? These are serious problems that we have in our city, and they're trying to slowly manipulate and warp and craft the mind of young men and women, and even adult men and women, and make them think that this type of behavior is something that is okay. Absolutely not, absolutely not, no part of any of this is okay. No part of it's okay, and I wanna know, I really wanna know, I want the person's name that went out of their way to include bathing facilities. What type of a pervert does that? You understand what I'm saying? What type of a monster says, "Yes, people based on their gender identity should be able to go in bathing facilities"? Bathing facilities? So you telling me that some guy, grown behind man, see, I almost slipped up there because that's how perturbed I am at this whole situation. Some grown behind man can say he identifies as a woman and go in the same shower facility or bath with women? That's crazy, that's crazy, that's absolutely crazy. And we need to be having these conversations and we need to talk about this stuff, but so few people wanna actually actively talk about it, because people are scared of how they'll be perceived or who will say, "What about them?" I don't care, it's wrong, and we need to stand up. When we see wrong, we need to call it out and we need to stand against it, and we need to push back. And I encourage you guys, please donate to my campaign, because we have to beat this insanity. Every single city council person voted for that, I would never, I promise you, I never vote for anything like that nonsense. I'll never, 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 excuse me, they say never, say never. I will not, as long as I draw breath, vote for anything like that. That is absolutely insane. We're not gonna, what we're not doing, and I'm not gonna let this go either, I'm not gonna let this go. Because I want the churches to come out on this. All the churches here in this city need to be standing up and pushing back against this, okay? No church should just be like, "This is okay." So if you're watching this, go tell your pastor, send this video to your pastor, send this video to your deacons, send this video to your bishop, send this video to whoever you have that else is in the church, the elders, whatever the case is. Every single body in your church needs to know about what's going on here. This is absolutely insane, and they passed this in our city, and they said that this is what we believe as a city. And it is time that we show them that it absolutely, when a thousand percent is not, our city does not believe that grown men should be in the bathroom or bathing facilities with little girls. Drop a comment, share this video on your page, your friends' page, wherever, and please donate to my campaign, MarcusTheNumber4Rochester.com. We have to, have to, have to get the word out about my candidacy, because it's very clear that in that nine to zero vote, unanimous vote, none, no, not one of them on city council will actually stand up for us. But I will stand up for you, I will stand up for you. You know why they did this? Because of special interests, they said it was ten different groups that collaborated together to do this. All nefarious nonprofits, some of them getting backdoor money from city council or different parts of the state, you understand what I'm saying? To push this ridiculous agenda on your child, on your nephews, on your nieces, on your family, okay? It's unacceptable. And there's more tragic stuff in there too, it goes on to talk about other things like, "We believe as a city that genital mutilation is good for children." Excuse me, you gonna tell me that we as a city, as a collective whole, believe that child genital mutilation is okay? I'm not with it, and I know that most of you out there aren't either. Even then, I'll take it one step further, I guarantee you, most of the people that identify as being one of these alphabet people, especially the homosexuals, I guarantee you that most of them do not agree with child genital mutilation. So you gonna sit here and tell me that that represents our city? How dare you, the audacity, the gall, you understand what I'm saying? The disrespect, the disservice, this is all in this, this is all in this law that they pushed and they passed, and they said that that's what we believe in. I don't believe in that, and I know for a fact that the vast majority of you don't. And I'm gonna get hate for saying what I'm saying, I'm telling you right now, I already know, I've already been getting hate for what I'm saying. I'm only standing up and preaching righteousness. I'm not saying anything wrong or out of the way or anything that everybody doesn't already know. Grown men shouldn't be in the showers with little girls. Grown men should not be using the bathroom with your wife. Unless it's maybe you, but you understand what I'm saying. Can I get real close real quick and just lean in a little bit on y'all? Listen, you guys, this right here shows you exactly how little that they are concerned with you, right? You can't even support this, I don't agree with you, but you might even support this. But the fact of the matter is, they did not bring this out to public. Something like this should have been a public referendum. But they didn't put it on a public referendum, because they knew good and God darn well, if they put this out there and let everybody else, the rest of the citizens in the city, know about this, the citizens would have flipped out, flipped out, everybody would have flipped out. If you drop a comment, I'll try to pop it up, drop a comment, I'll try to share it. Not all the platforms will allow me to pop the comments up, but if you do, I'll read it later and I'll write back. So I encourage you, please donate to my campaign, because we gotta beat these people. There is no way that if this is the start of what they're doing, you guys, this is just the start of what they're doing. And the complete disrespect that it happened with shows you that they'll do whatever they can behind your back, behind closed doors, and just kinda sneak it in there, okay? Now, this is very, very serious, this is very, very serious, okay? And I just honestly, it bothers me so much that not one, it's nine of them, bro. It's nine of them, outside of the three people who did it, who pushed this whole nonsense, Stanley Martin, Mary Lupien, okay, Kim Smith, I'm calling y'all out, okay? I'm calling you out, because how dare you, Stanley Martin, okay? Who fake black, you ain't really black and you ain't really from Rochester, so we ain't gonna talk about that. You Caribbean from somewhere, okay? Come on now, trying to tell us that this is what black people want. Black people don't want this nonsense, you don't speak for us. Kim Smith, the audacity, Kim, you know better, you know better. Tell the rest of the black people, Kim, okay? That this is what you support, that you support men in bathrooms with little girls and in the rec center bathroom with little girls, talk to me, Kim. Mary, we already know how you feel, you so far left, you know, fell off the other side of the boat, okay? So, but these are the serious problems, I didn't expect those three to come out to the public and say anything. But Mitch Gruber, you supposed to be a practicing Jew, is that what Jews believe? Jews believe that grown men should go in the bathroom with little girls? Mitch, tell me, is that what Jews believe? I'm gonna go speak to a couple of my rabbi friends tomorrow, because I ain't never heard that from one Jew. Not even the ones that really be really deep into the Talmud and the rest of those books, okay? And there's some very sketchy stuff in there, okay? But I ain't even never heard no nonsense like that, okay? There's sorta kinda some stuff in the Talmud that says stuff like that, but the point of the matter is, is I ain't never heard them out here saying none of that. So are you Jewish or are you not? You support this, so do Jews support this, right? You're saying that Jews support that? Because Kim Smith and Stanley Martin are saying that black people support that, and we definitely don't, okay? Then you got Miguel Melendez, Miguel, Puerto Ricans support that? You show me the Puerto Ricans that support that nonsense. Did you take it to the barrio? Cuz I'm gonna take it to the barrio, I'm gonna tell them and see what they feel about it. I'm gonna let them know what you did, Miguel. Talk to me, bro, what's up? Okay, I can't believe that you did that. Willie Lightfoot, you supposed to be a pastor, bro, what's good? That's apostate nature, that's abomination, you pushing on people. Come on now, you just letting this happen? Who's y'all getting kickbacks or what's going on? Come on, and LaShay, I'm so disappointed, I can't even, I can't even. And then Michael Patterson, bro. Here's the thing about Mike Patterson that hurts my heart the most. We just don't agree on everything, but one thing that he said in that meeting that night is that he stands against the socialist agenda. Michael Patterson said that in that, in that, in that meeting that night, that's what he said at the city council meeting. He said that he stands against, the same one that they voted for this. He said that he stands against the socialist agenda. But you just passed and codified the socialist agenda in this document. Are you serious, or you just playing in my face and being cute when it's convenient? Now, I ain't gonna be mad at these people, like all the other people gonna be mad at them, but y'all need to be mad at them, y'all need to be lighting up them phone lines and pushing this to be overturned. Ain't no way, so despicable. I wanna know who got paid off of this nonsense, this is too much, it's too much. All that rest of that stuff, the illegal alien nonsense, okay, y'all know I'm not for that, but that's besides the point, because they tried to sneak this in there, they tried to sneak this in there, okay? Yeah, so somebody says, so that's meaning, and I can't, I'm sorry, I can't really see it cuz of the way that this thing is set up here, the whole comment, but essentially they're saying, "Meaning any creep or pedo serial killer can be dressed up in disguise." And yes, yes, that's exactly what it means, that's exactly what it means. And they don't even need to be in a disguise, because it's in the head, it's what they say that they identify out of their mouth, it's not necessarily a real thing. So this is a very, very, very serious situation, and we need to address it. So I encourage you guys, wherever you are, you don't have to be local to donate to my campaign, help me fight this insanity, I need your help, donate to my campaign. No matter where you are, you can donate, do it on my website, MarcusTheNumber4Rochester.com, that's MarcusTheNumber4Rochester.com. Please also sign up to volunteer, if you can volunteer, please do that as well. And let's continue, cuz I'm gonna read some more of this, right? Cuz I do wanna get into some part of the illegal alien situation, and we're gonna come back to this, cuz I got some more, I need to take a breath, I need a breather from this for a second. That's how bad this thing is, okay? Now, let's get up here. So they added a whole new part of legislative things in this whole situation for illegal aliens. Now, here's the situation, it's titled immigrants, right? But they're not immigrants, they're illegal aliens. Immigrants came into this country the right way, okay, not the wrong way. Refugees came into this country the right way, not the wrong way. And if you've ever dealt with refugees, you know, it's ridiculous, ridiculous, ridiculous what refugees have to go through to get into this country. So to disrespect them and lump them in with illegal aliens, it's not acceptable. And yes, yes, who said that, Shayla? Yes, this is all the Democrats, every single one of them on city council is Democrat right now. So I encourage you, vote for me, I'll be on the conservative line. And if you are sick and tired of the Democrat Party, change your registration, change your registration. Register as an independent, cuz these people, like they don't represent nobody but themselves, okay? So go register as a blank or no party affiliation. If you feel that you're more conservative and have more conservative values, talk to me, we'll see about if you would be interested in registering as a Republican if you have actual Republican values. But this is crazy, you're absolutely right, this is all Democrats. Every single one of them is Democrats, this was pushed by the progressive left. They say that they're so-called progressives right on all of their stuff for those three that I mentioned earlier. Now, this is one of the worst things that I hate about these fake pseudo-political people nowadays. They like to try to change the definition of words and meanings, like we're talking about immigrants right now. Like they call themselves the progressives, they're not the progressives. The progressives were ultra-conservative group, go look up the progressive party, okay? Go look it up, right? Like don't believe me because I'm saying it, believe me because I'm telling you. I'm taking the time and I'm telling you, go look it up. The progressive party was ultra-conservative, they'd never be for any of this stuff. They'd be like, "We need to lynch these people in the street," type of stuff, okay? And no lynching is not just something for black people, that they try to make it out to be. Hanging people is the historic way of killing people in America and in many other nations. And it's still done in a ton of other countries, especially North-South America. So it's not uncommon, and Europe still too, they still hang people in many places in Europe. Like it's not, but they try to make you mess with your mind, because they wanna get rid of the death penalty for these crazy creepers, okay? This is part of the problem, but again, back to the part that they call themselves progressives. They're not progressives, not really, they just co-opted that name because they thought that it sounded good. You know, the progressive party are the people who pushed to make marijuana illegal. They also pushed to make alcohol illegal and that was where prohibition came from, that was the progressives. So we need to understand that they're trying to manipulate language to influence the way that we think, the way that we feel. And that's why they're calling these illegal aliens immigrants and it's a complete and utter disrespect. A complete and utter disrespect to everybody else. It's unacceptable. Let's see, Ryan made a comment, Ryan, what you got, what you talking about? Ryan says. Marcus, we had a great conference earlier today, let's continue getting people out. Let's continue to get the word out about the problems in our city and what people can do to work to make a difference, yeah. Thank you, Ryan. We did a press conference earlier about this because this is completely insane and it's more upsetting that city council didn't bring this to the public. This should have been a referendum, we should have voted on this. Like they just unilaterally did it with these ten nonprofit groups that are funneling money into their pockets or into their cousin's pockets. Cause somebody must be getting some money, or maybe they got dirt on you, or maybe they're holding a dagger behind your neck. I don't know. Okay, but for there to be people on there that call themselves Christian to sign this bill. Okay, that allows grown men in little girls bathrooms. Okay, and in showers with little girls. Okay, people that you don't know around your family members, bro. I don't know how you can call yourself a Christian and sign off on that. And I definitely don't know how you can call yourself a pastor. I got problems with that for sure. Okay, and I, I, I guess I'm, I'm sure I'm not gonna make no new friends, uh, out of any of them after this video. Okay, but I'm sure that they knew how I would feel about this before it happened. But somebody gotta name them by name. Especially Stanley Martin, Kim Smith, and Mary Lupien who pushed this. And Stanley is on the ballot this year, she needs not to win, y'all, do not vote for Stanley. Normally I don't tell people, oh, don't vote for this person or vote for that person. Definitely don't vote for her. Okay, definitely don't vote for her because she co-offered this with those people, who's putting the money in your pockets, Stanley? Snipe. Ridiculous. It's absolutely unacceptable. What else we got, uh? So, uh, what's it say, Ms. Davis says, you can kiss public places goodbye. Ms. Davis, you are absolutely right, this is crazy. It's unacceptable. It's unacceptable, you can't be, and as we fought so. This is a big thing for me, right? So. In our country, and we're right in the city of Susan B. Anthony, right? Women have fought so hard for all of these rights and their freedoms and stuff like this. And this is backtracking on all of this, it's stealing away women's privacies, wo- women, women's ability to have their own spaces. Like, that's crazy, didn't you guys just see that Uber even started a thing where you can select a woman-only driver? Well, why is that? Because sometimes women feel as though they need their own spaces and their own places. Okay? Like, so we're just gonna completely disacknowledge women, like women aren't important anymore? Like, I mean, again, now they're making the best, the best women are men now, apparently. And this legislation, and I wanna get back to the immigration because I'm trying to stay off this topic for a second so I can cool down. Cause I mean, man, I'm so wound up like about this, I'm trying to tell you. But in this legislation. It also says. Not just the men in women's bathrooms and the men in women's showers. It, not just the, we believe in child genital mutilation, it doesn't just say those two things. It also says that men should be able to participate in women's sports. Okay? And girls' sports. Where does it stop, you guys? I love women athletes, you understand what I'm saying? Like that's, it's impressive to be any type of an athlete. It's impressive to be any type of an athlete. It's not easy. I used to be, well, I guess that's technically, I still am an athlete. Um, but I used to play more sports before, I don't play as many sports. Okay? But the fact of the matter is, is women have fought hard and they trained hard for their own, for their own sports. Women aren't able to compete against men. Or men that identify as women. Or express themselves as women. Like, are you serious? Like, they don't have the muscle density, they don't have the bone density, they don't have the hormones, it, it just doesn't work like that. It's unfair. And aren't we talking about equality and justice for all, where is the justice for them? What I'm seeing is justice for some and not for the greater whole. You know? I didn't see any special protections in that legislation for black people. I'm a black man, we are the most discriminated class in society, I am a black, Christian, American. We are the most discriminated class in society. Okay? There ain't nothing out there for us, as a matter of fact, they don't even expect us to achieve anything in our lifetime. So when you talk to me about a class that needs to be protected. It should be black men, should be in that legislation somewhere, where are the protections for black men? You understand what I'm saying, where are the protections for black people? Did they put in protections for Puerto Ricans? Oh, no, they didn't put protections for Puerto Ricans, but they put in protections for illegal aliens from other countries, got you. Got you, so Puerto Ricans didn't get anything special there either, right? So y'all not important to them, they don't gotta listen to what these people saying in the legislation that they writing. Cause they telling you what they about and they telling you who's actually important and you are not it to them. But you matter to me. And that's why I'm running and I encourage you guys, share this video, share it on your page, your friend's page, everybody's page. Send it in an email, send it in the snail mail, okay, do whatever, get this message out there. And let people know that November fourth, they can vote for me or in early ballots or mail-in ballots too. They can vote for me, Marcus C. Williams, because this is unacceptable. We can't let this stuff continue for them to continue act like we're not important and we don't exist and our values don't matter. And they don't care about us when they're supposed to be our representatives that are responsive to us. That's why I always encourage you guys, stand up. Stand up. Share this with your pastor, share this with your preacher, share this with your bishop, whoever, okay? Prophet test, prophet, whoever, I don't care, man. Everybody that says that they are children of God or believers, share this with their religious leader. Because this is unacceptable. Let everybody in black society share with their family, let everybody in La- Latino society share with their families. Let everybody that's a normal white person share with their families. You understand what I'm saying? Let everybody else that is of sound mind and sound body. Share it, share this video. Cause this is unacceptable what is being done in our city. And please, encourage everybody to donate to my campaign. I need to raise about ten thousand dollars to really do something, that means if we can raise a hundred dollars from a hundred people. We're really kicking something forward and we can make this victory really secure. Okay, so please donate on my website, you don't have to be local to donate, you don't have to be local to donate. Go to my website, support Marcus and number four Rochester.com, click the little donate button. It takes less than two minutes to donate, there's even a thing on the donate page that shows you where you can send. Uh, uh, a, um, check if you wanna donate a check. Donate by check. You guys, but I need your help. I need your help, sign up, volunteer on my face, on my page. Okay, send me a message saying that you wanna volunteer, okay? Let me know that you're willing to stand up and push back against this nonsense. And I hope that we can have a whole army of people that's gonna go down to city council with me next month. And stand up and push back against this nonsense. Cause we're not gonna let this go, we can't let this go, if we let this go, this will open the floodgates for everything else. They've already told you that they don't, that you don't matter to them, that they don't care about you and that they will do whatever they can underneath your nose without even alerting you. They showing you what they about. They showing you what they about. Somebody says, let me see, somebody commented, what's it say? Um. Ms. Davis says the closing doors on the public schools is next. Because you never know what type of person is walking in. And yeah, that's a whole nother thing what's going on in the schools, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. It's a serious problem. But we can't leave, we gotta stay here and fight. We gotta stand up, we can't just let them do us anyway. Because if you try to run away and you try to go to another city, many people that are watching are watching from across the country. So people will tell you in Texas, they'll tell you what happened when all of the people ran from California, all of that stuff came there. They'll tell you what happened in Nashville, when all the people running from places like New York and other places. It's not the same stuff, same stuff is happening right in Nashville. Okay? They'll tell you the problems in these other so-called red states. All of the issues are traveling there because people are not standing up here and pushing back, we must stand up here. And that's what I'm asking you, if you are of good sense and of good values and good morals, please donate to my campaign. Marcus and number four Rochester.com, you don't have to be local. Share this video and encourage ten other people to donate to my campaign too. If we get a hundred, a hundred donations of a hundred dollars, we'll really be able to make an impact in this campaign. Cause we can't let this stuff go. We let it go here, it's gonna go over there next, then it'll go over there. Okay, if you live in Monroe County, I need your donation, donate to my campaign. If you live in New York State, I need your donation. Donate to my campaign. If you live in the United States of America. I need your donations, donate to my campaign. Cause we gotta stop these socialist fake neo-progressives and these other weak Democrats that are destroying our city. Most of the people here, you guys, listen to me carefully, most of the people in my city are Democrats, if you're watching this, you probably a Democrat. Can you believe that this is what these crazy people are saying represents you as a Democrat? That's what these people are telling you as a Democrat represents you, that's what you believe in, as a Democrat. These people are telling you as a Democrat that you believe in child genital mutilation. You believe in cutting off little boy's wedding tackle? You believe in cutting off a little girl's bosoms, that's what you believe as a Democrat? I don't think you believe that, but that's what they're telling you out, out their mouth that you believe in. Don't stand for that. Help me, you can donate to my campaign, like I said, it doesn't matter who you are. Okay, you can vote for me if you live in the city of Rochester this year in November or in early voting. Marcus and number four Rochester.com, go to my website, donate. And I'll be on the conservative line this year, so just look for me online, see, just check my name and you don't even need to change your party to do it, we got a couple other comments, let's see. Okay? And let's see, I can't read that, why does it say that? Can't read that. Sorry, it takes everyone to fight, Marcus. What a disgrace to humanity, absolutely right. It is a disgrace to humanity. It's an absolutely repugnant. Disgrace to humanity. And we shouldn't be sit, we shouldn't be sitting idly by. It's going for it. People, you guys, I'm encouraging you, you can't just stand on the internet and pitch a fit and say, oh, I don't like this, or oh, I don't like that. Don't, we, we're beyond that. We can't do that no more, that's not gonna get us where we need to be, people need to get active. You gotta get out, you gotta help, you gotta help me pass out flyers, you gotta help me knock on doors, I need your help to make phone calls, I need your donations. I need you guys to get active, if you're not in the city of Rochester, wherever you are, you need to get active now. And you need to be making sure that you're sharing up with other good people and linking up with them. Okay, so that when the time comes, if need be, you can get active on these type of issues. Because there is no way that our government, bro. Our government should be legislating social change. Let me be very clear on that. There's two things that is very important that the government does not do. Because once that starts to happen, that means the governor is, the government is the arbiter of all. And you can might as well kiss your rights and liberties goodbye. And this is the first step, okay? This right here, because what it is, is it's legislating social morality and the social code of our city. Okay, you can't legislate morals, right? People say you can't legislate morals, you, you kinda can if you have something to base those morals on, which will be. The teachings of Jesus and the Lord our Father in heaven, which is what the foundations of our nation was founded upon and we can dig into that deep. Some people will say, oh, well, separation of church and faith, that's not a real thing, that's also a lie, I teach classes on this. You can join one, they're usually free, okay, sometimes they're ten dollars, alright? But here's the deal. We. In this legislation. Have become so perverted in nature. As a society. That. People from our past would not recognize us today. I want you to go out right now and tell your grandma. If your grandmother's alive, go tell your grandmother. That they're gonna let grown men shower in public with little girls. In rec centers and in city pools, go tell them that. Go tell your grandmother that, tell your grandfather that, tell your old uncle, y'all know the one, go tell your old uncle that, okay? Let, let them know, let them know, let's see what they say. Nobody would recognize what's going on. Right now. It's ridiculous, it's ridiculous. Uh, let's see, we got another comment here. It's abomination. It is, it is. And let's take two seconds, okay, and talk about the abomination, right? Because people be like, oh, well, you're anti alphabet or whatever the cases, listen, I talk about this all the time. Your issues with same-sex attraction is your own personal issues and that is your flesh and your own personal demons. You gotta fight back against and push back against, I hope you turn to Christ so Christ can help you overcome those issues. All of us have our precli- our proclivities or things that we have been given that are our own personal struggles. For some, it's things like the drug use or alcoholism or pornography or, or, uh, what do you call it? Uh, sleeping around, stuff like that, other sexual sin and stuff like that. And this is stuff that we have to understand and recognize. It doesn't make you a bad person, right? No, cause, but nobody is good and all fall short of the Lord our Father, okay? But it doesn't necessarily make you a bad person, the issue is, is. People will say, oh, well. If they're acting on those, that is the sin, right? Like you can have those desires, but acting on it is the sin. And I'm not condemning anybody for any of that, you got to go fix that, okay? That's your, that's your, your thing. What I'm talking about. Is a step further than that. Because this isn't even about homosexuality and this is what I have to emphasize to you guys. It's not about homosexuality, it's not about the L, the G, or the B. It's about all the rest of that nonsense. All of these other extra letters that they done added on, they done gone from homosexuality with, which is the LG and the B. Okay? That's the actual sexual orientation to all these other letters. Okay? To all these other letters. Trans, intersex, all of this other nonsense, stop playing in my face. You making stuff up. Okay, and I don't care what nobody says trying to get in my comments, say some different stuff. First of all, I don't care what you got to say, saying something different on that level, on that conversation. I'd be happy to have a conversation on anything else, okay, but you wanna tell me that I'm wrong on that, I'm gonna tell you that you ain't right on life. Okay? You need to fix yourself. Okay? Cause when you're out here telling little kids that they can identify as a cat and that they need a litter box in the schools. Before your cat child, I'm gonna ask you, if your cat is out in public and not in your house or in your backyard, can we put them down? Like the rest of the thing, like the rest of the animals? Well, the fact of the matter is, is they just passed new laws in New York State that allow them to kill your elders. I call it elder side, they call it compassionate care. And, 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 you know, it's medically aided induced death, they call it, they just passed this in New York State. The Democrats once again saying that they represent you. Um, pass that. And now they're gonna kill off your elders because it's a financial burden on the state because the state's paying off, out too much for them. They won't tell you that that's what it is, but that's what it is, it's the same reason why they tell you to kill off your babies, right? This legislation says, oh, yes, we believe that you should be able to kill all your babies, okay? You believe that we should be able to kill all the babies, you believe that we should be able to kill all the elders. It's no wonder people are out here in these streets killing each other left and right. You understand what I'm saying? If you don't have any respect for the sanctity of life, then you try to put in a policy on the city telling me that you don't got no sancti- no respect for the sanctity of life. Then you gonna be like, oh, well, there's some murders over there, and then I, then I thought about it, I said, I wonder why. And I bring this up in videos often, I wonder why city council never talks about the murders or the victims of violent crime and the stuff like that. Well, it's very clear by this legislation that they passed affirming that they believe in murdering your babies. They said, you know. We don't care about life at all. Now we know where they stand, they've shown their colors and this is the reason why they're not doing anything about all the murders. This is the reason why they're not doing anything about the violent crime. And one thing that this bill should show you more than anything that they just passed, that all of this stuff is nonsense, it's illegal by the way, but that's a separate conversation for another time. But all of this nonsense. Nowhere in there is there protections for victims. No, that, we got all this crime going on, nowhere in there did they put a section for it to be a sanctuary city for victims of violent crime. Nowhere in there did they put it to be a sanctuary city for businesses that have been vandalized or robbed or lost due to theft. Or robbery. Nowhere in there did they say that we're going to protect the victims of people who have been murdered or. Uh, address the issues of families of victims of crime, nowhere in there doesn't say any of that. If we're not keeping our own people, our own citizens safe. Who is it a sanctuary city for? who is it a sanctuary city for? Now you're asking the right questions. Who is it really a sanctuary city for? Because we're not safe outside. Yesterday, if you saw the news, we had like eight shootings, four stabbings and all types of other craziness going on. I'm not even making those numbers up. I think I saw six shootings in the news, you know what I'm saying? It might've been, it might've been seven, cause two of them were like double shootings, you know? So it might've been seven, I might've seen all eight that I know of in the news. So one was a double shooting right downtown in front of our senator's office, who says he'll never lock up criminals again, Jeremy Cooney. Okay, Democrat, right? Like these are Democrat policies. They're telling you as a Democrat, if you're a Democrat, that this is what represents you as a Democrat. I don't think that most democrats believe this. So I encourage you, this year in November, vote for me. You don't need to change your party to do it. Okay, cause look at the nonsense that they're putting in the policy. So two people were murdered right in front of, well, not murdered, they were shot. Yeah, I think one might've ended up dying. They might still be okay. Too many people died, like three people died yesterday. It's whole thing crazy. The one that got stabbed up died. That one didn't make the news though. Anyway, they had another stabbing over on, um, what's that right there? Dewey and Driving Park, okay? They stabbed multiple times. It's the way that they wrote it, it sounded better than I'm sure that it really was. Cause when I was reading it in print, it looked a bit crazy. So I'm sure it really was very crazy. Then we had the, the police responded, and I don't think that this made the news, but the police responded to this one call. For, I guess they were stealing cars or somebody's breaking into cars or whatever the case is. So they go there to investigate the people still in the cars. And then all of the sudden, the police are caught in the crossfire between two other unrelated individuals that are shooting over something else completely. And then one of the police had to shoot back to stop one of them from shooting. And it, it, the whole thing is crazy. The whole thing is absolutely crazy. Uh, Christine says, Christine, what you saying? Christine says they already had, they, I, I don't understand what you're saying. Got to put more words there, sister. I, 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 I see it, but I, they already have, they already have, you gotta be more specific. I, I'm sorry, I don't know when that comment popped up. Um, but yeah, so this is a serious problem. They're not putting any legislation forward saying that we're gonna protect the city, the citizens. So then you, but you calling it a sanctuary city. On top of that issue, there was like four other shootings. And then like multiple stabbings on top of what I already mentioned, and this was yesterday. Uh, so where, where is the protection for the actual citizens, right? It's a sanctuary city for who? Everybody except for you. Every single city council person, every single person on the county ledge, it's safe for them, it's great for them. Not for you. Not for you, cause they don't care about you. City council doesn't care about you. And they call themselves democrats, and you might be a democrat. Does this stuff represent you? Absolutely not. And I encourage you, vote for me. Okay, this November, November fourth, you don't even need to change your party to do it. And please, donate to my campaign. We need to raise about ten thousand dollars. So whatever you can donate, whether it's twenty-five dollars or five hundred dollars or more, it doesn't matter. Whatever you can donate, you don't even have to be local to donate. I need your help to defeat these crazy socialist neo Marxist and progressives and that call themselves progressives. We already went over how they not really progressive, but that's a different conversation. And these communists, all of these people that are on our city council. We don't have one voice of reason on there. They voted nine to zero, you guys, nine to zero. Every single democrat on there voted for this insanity. Even the one that calls him a pastor, himself a pastor, even the one that calls himself a Jew, and even the other ones on there that called themselves Christians. Voted for this insanity. It's unacceptable. So please, donate to my campaign, Marcus the number four Rochester dot com. You don't have to be local to donate. Donate whatever you can. If we can get a hundred people to donate a hundred dollars, we'll really be cooking, okay? So please, donate whatever you can. Now I wanna read some more. I wanna get into the illegal alien portion, okay, I wanna talk about that. Um, cause I haven't been talking about that, because it's hard for me to get to talk about that, right? Like if you're watching this and you follow me, or if you, maybe you're new here, but if you follow me, you know how I feel about illegal aliens, okay? We need to prioritize citizens, immigrants here that are here illegally, and we, and the refugees. That's it. Illegal aliens need to go back, okay? Because they need to follow the process the appropriate way, cause we got tons of refugees that are struggling hard to try to get into this country that now are on extended waiting lists that was already bad, because all of these illegal aliens came in here. And that's not cool. Not cool at all. They're also taking uh, stuff away from refugees because of the illegal aliens. And they're giving it to them instead. Don't even get me started. I work with a lot of them. It's a serious problem. Okay, I, I don't like it at all. I got a lot to say on it. I, I don't, it's frustrating. I don't really wanna go down that path right now. Somebody said a comment. Let me see. She says, is there a appeal process to object to the law? We have to go and push them to change the law. We have to go and push city council to amend that, okay? So reach out to me if you wanna help fight this. Reach out to me, send me a message in messenger, shoot me, shoot me an email or whatever at my email, Marcus at Marcus the number four Rochester dot com, okay? You can shoot me an email, shoot me an email, shoot me a message in messenger or whatever. Okay, and we can work on organizing to push back against this insanity on city council. Now, I wanna talk about this, uh, this illegal alien thing real quick. I might not even read it all. The whole thing is very long. Um, but essentially what it does, I'm gonna, I'm gonna paraphrase a good portion of it. Okay, but essentially what it does is it says that no police officers or whatever can help federal officials at all under any circumstances. So that's problematic, okay? And this is a serious issue. Because we know, very recently, we had H I S, you know, Homeland Security Investigations here in Rochester, and they were arresting people that were illegal aliens, right? And people were like, oh, well, they're arresting these people or whatever, and it's ICE, it's ICE, it's ICE, okay? So first of all, Homeland Security Investigations is essentially the FBI version of the Department of Homeland, right? So that's their version of the FBI. So if you find H, H, HSI somewhere, it's real serious. There's some serious stuff going on. Okay, it's some international criminality type of stuff. So they were here working on busts for actual human trafficking and human smuggling. Now I said earlier, we got a huge human trafficking and human smuggling issue in our city that never gets talked about. I'm the only person that I know that's involved locally in politics on any side of anything that even talks about the human trafficking here at all. It's very bothersome to me. Don't get me started on the missing teenagers, okay, and especially all the missing teenager girls. And they're like, oh, they ran away from home. You telling me that all these teenagers ran away from home and none of them have a social media footprint? Who's dumb? You understand what I'm saying? Okay, is it a sanctuary city for, for missing children? What are we doing? What are we doing? So anyway, people got real mad that Homeland Security and ICE were here busting up these human trafficking rings. And I made a comment and a whole bunch of people, most of them transplants, not a Rochester, not Rochester natives, okay? And more affluent individuals got mad. Then I said, good that, uh, that H I S is locking these people up. And I pointed out that they're human traffickers that they're going after. They're targeting human traffickers. And they're like, oh, you're not nice because you support ICE or whatever the case is. Okay, and I'm like, what's wrong with you? You support human trafficking? Like this is the mindset of these people here. Like that doesn't represent us. Like you tripping. But so the police stopped and they had, cause H I S, again, these are investigators, these are like real serious people, right? Like it's not ICE, it's not Border Patrol. Okay, even though Border Patrol and Customs, they get real serious too. That's a whole separate conversation. I appreciate them. You should really look into some of the stuff that they do. I think Border Patrol is underappreciated the same way that the US Coast Guard is underappreciated. When you really find out what type of real raw dudes that some of these people that are in the Coast Guard are, you're like, oh, it'll change your whole view on the Coast Guard. Same thing about, um, Border Patrol, okay? Cause we have a warped conception of that. But I, I bring that up to say that these people were out here saying, oh, well, it's, it's bad for them to be here. And the police had helped stop these other people, cause it was a van, it was like eight people in the van, right? So the police came, H I S had called for backup or whatever. They didn't know what they were getting into. These human smugglers, right? They can have all types of weapons. We see all types of weapons on our streets right now. Again, is it a sanctuary city for victims? Absolutely not, right? But then the mayor got up on the TV chastising our police, saying, oh, the police shouldn't help the, uh, the, the, um, ICE and the Border Patrol and stuff like that, and they shouldn't do that. Excuse me? What do you mean they shouldn't do that? Are they criminals? Yes. Is the police's job to deal with the criminals? Yes. Is it in our city? Yes. Is the criminals in our city? Yes. Is the crime in our city? Yes. So why would they not do that? Are you telling me that if the US Marshals ask for help from the police, that the police can't help the US Marshals? You wanna tell me that if the sheriff asks for help from R P D, that the sheriff can't get no help from R P D? If it's in the city of Rochester? Can you make that make sense to me? Explain it to me like I'm five years old, because these people be playing in your face. And then it turned into such a big situation, okay, it got to the ears of the president himself and what's it called, uh, Tom Homan. And Tom Homan came to Rochester and spoke to the police, you know what I'm saying, to try to boost up their morale after people like Stanley Martin, okay? Voted to push to defund the police. Then she had the nerve, I got a video out there. Okay, then she had the nerve to tell me she never def, put, pushed to defund the police. She was a goddamn liar. Okay, I even put, pulled the article and showed the article where she said that. Because she said it a number, in, 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 innumerable times, okay? Same thing with Mary Lupien. Her, oh, we need to abolish the police. Not just get rid of her, defund, abolish the police. Well, abolish doesn't mean abolish. I know language. I got a dictionary. I know what words means. Whose face are you playing in? And that's what these elected officials do. They play in our face like we're dumb and we're supposed to just go along with them. I'm not going along with none of y'all. And like they tell you as a child, don't let nobody else drive your bus. I refuse to let these people drive our bus, cause they are driving off a cliff. Okay, and I encourage you, if you tired of these crazy kook backs all over our city and all over the country, donate to my campaign. You don't even have to be local to donate. Marcus the number four Rochester dot com. That's Marcus the number four Rochester dot com. Please go there, donate whatever you can, whether it's twenty-five dollars, a hundred dollars, or five hundred dollars or more. Whatever you can donate helps a lot. If we can get like a hundred donations of a hundred dollars, we'll really be moving forward. Cause I'm gonna need about ten thousand dollars to really make this campaign and pull it off completely to make a win. And remember in November, November fourth, tell your friends, your family, your enemies, everybody, well, whoever you notice tired of this nonsense that's going on in the city with the crime, with the schools, with the jobs, with the housing, with the energy crisis, whatever the case is. Tell them to vote for me, Marcus C. Williams, for Rochester City Council, November fourth on Election Day or in early voting. They don't even have to change their party to vote for me. I'll be on the conservative line and they can just check my name, whether they're Democrat, Republican, independent, whatever. You can vote for me. Because it's time that we stand up and we say no more. It's time that we stand up and we say we demand elected officials that will address our actual issues. Not just serve special interest groups and not just serve nonprofits and not just serve their benefactors, but actually serve our residents and our citizens. That's what I got for y'all, okay? I wanna talk more, but I, I'm really overwhelmed with a lot of less than positive. Not so much feelings, but I'm feeling some type of way. You know what I'm saying? Like I don't have an adequate word or there's not an adequate feeling to explain exactly what I'm, what, what I, my thoughts and feelings on this matter right now, cause it's wrong, right? Like instead of equal rights, they're giving superior rights. And they're forcing laws on you to constrain you from your good sense, from your sense of morality. Okay, from your religious perspective, from your human perspective, that they're trying to push this indoctrination and forced acceptance of a rewriting of social norms, which the government shouldn't ever have anything to do with rewriting social or cultural norms. It's unacceptable. It's absolutely unacceptable. It is oppression and it is repression. And that's what it is, and it needs to be called out for exactly what it is. People wanna talk about fascism and fascists. This is fascism. Empowering the government with, by, the government writing more laws to control your everyday aspect of life, your business, the way that you run your own stuff, that's called fascism. When you put all the hands in the power of government, but these people will call you fascist for not believing it. They're the fascist ones. I don't want the government doing everything. As a matter of fact, I think the government is too big. I think the federal government needs to be one eightieth of the size that it is. It's way too huge. They do way too much and they can't even govern themselves. Okay, they can't do nothing. They can't do nothing, right? Even the basics of their job, like passing a budget, they can't even do that. And it's not a party thing, it's all of them. You understand what I'm saying? It's a whole government. Then we talk about the local level. These people don't represent me. They don't represent you, not a one of them. Not a one of them. You understand what I'm saying? And they serve themselves. So why would I wanna empower them to have more power over me, my friends, my family, my business, my citizens, or anything like that? Why would you wanna get in more power? I don't wanna get in more power. I think that most of the laws that the city has, especially city ordinances and stuff like that, need to be completely removed. I think that for the majority of them, we could probably cut it down, at least a good fifty percent. At least a good fifty percent. But they don't wanna do that because they want more power. All of it is about them gaining more power over your everyday life. I want to re-empower the citizens and disempower the government. That's what I'm about. I'm about empowering you and putting the hands of power in your hands, okay? Cause these people clearly don't care about you. You don't matter to them. They do whatever they want. They serve their own masters. If they're not putting money in their pockets, they're putting money in their cousin's pockets or the offshore bank accounts or wherever they're putting it. You understand what I'm saying? The gold bullion that they're storing in their storage locker. You understand what I'm saying? All of this nonsense that's really going on. Then you see all of these people when they finally do get off city council or everything. All of them got these real cushy palatial jobs in other places, and you really start to ask yourself, hmm, what's really going on? And then you look at the companies and stuff that they end up working for and stuff like that, and you're like, well, wait a second, isn't that a group that gets money from the government? Like how did that, how does that, how's that not a conflict of interest? All of these things are real serious. And we need to talk about them, but more than talking about them, we need to demand action from our elected officials. So please, I'm asking you, have faith that you can make a difference. Help my campaign, pitch in, donate, whatever you can, volunteer on my page, okay, donate. You don't even have to be local to donate. Please, whatever you can, twenty-five dollars, a hundred dollars, two hundred and fifty dollars, five hundred dollars, a thousand, whatever you can do. Help us get more money so we can get the word out, make more advertisements. Get more flyers. Here's some of the flyers right here. It looks like this. This is some of our current flyers right here. We need more flyers, please donate, okay? We need more advertisements online. I need your help with that. I'd like to get a mailing out or something like that, but the mailings, they really cost a couple thousand dollars. So we need to raise more funds. So please, donate to my campaign from wherever you are. Marcus the number four Rochester dot com. Help me defeat these people who very clearly are supposed to represent our citizens, but only represent themselves. I'll catch you guys later. Remember, share this video, share it with your friends, share it on your page, send it in an email, send it down the street in a snail mail, whatever you can do. Get the message out. Help me make a difference in Rochester. Stop these socialists. Stop these quasi so-called progressives. Stop these people that are trying to impede in your everyday life. Stop these people that are trying to empower the government so that they have more control over you. I will never vote on anything that empowers the government to have more control over you or empowers the government to tell you what you can do, can and are not able to do in your private business and your private life, okay? And they say never, say never, okay? But as long as I have anything to say about it, I won't, okay? And if it's something that even remotely sounds reasonable, I'm gonna bring your attention to every single thing that I sign off on, especially if it's something that sound crazy. But right now, nobody told us about this bill. This bill just come out of nowhere, okay? And let me tell you the process of order or operations. These crazy people were working behind the scenes to push this bill in. Mary and Stanley and Kim Smith submitted it. It looks like it was June fourth. I don't know if that's what it actually was, but that's what it says on the leg, on the piece. So then it got pushed into the, uh, I guess you'd say docket on the, on June 6th, 17th. And then it went to the, um, committee, was it? The Committee of the Whole, which is all of the people on city council are on that committee, so they're all supposed to work on it together. And then just Tuesday, okay? Which would have been, I don't know, what, the 26th? I feel like it was the 26th. Okay? Was when they actually voted on the whole thing to pass it and implement it. And every single one of them voted on it. It's not okay. It's not okay. It's not okay. And the fact that they're telling our law enforcement not to do their job is even, is even worse, right? Cuz like they keep making it worse and worse and worse. And I'm very concerned at the end of the day about martial law and Governor Kathy using the National Guard on our streets, cuz she's already started to normalize that. She did it during COVID, they were even doing checkpoints. They had the National Guard in the hospital, I was warning people then, they're trying to normalize it so they can just usher in martial law, you'll be clamoring for the boot. And then they'll actually give it to you. You think that they pass these laws to let all the criminals run wild for no reason? You think they shut down all the prisons for no reason? You think all of this stuff happens in a vacuum? It doesn't, it's part of a very, very more serious devious plan to deteriorate our society so that it can empower the few and disempower everybody else. That's what all of it's about at the end of the day. And many of these people that are serving in these different positions are all about self-interest. So they'll do whatever is best for themselves, not for you. I'm out for the community, and if that means that I get in there and I end up being in there for one term, so be it. Okay, I'm gonna show you what real representation looks like and what your future representatives should do. And I want you to hold them to that level of standard that I'm gonna show you when I get in there. So please, donate to my campaign, MarcusTheNumber4Rochester.com. You don't have to be in the city of Rochester to donate, you can be anywhere in the country and donate. And if you're in Rochester or in the county area, please volunteer for my campaign too. We gotta make this happen. We can't have these people be doing this. And this year, we have a real, real shot at winning this. But with your help, we can guarantee a win. So tell all your friends and everybody else, donate, pitch in, help me save our city and push back against this insanity. I'll fight for you, I'll fight for our city, I'll fight for our nation to bring some sense to the nonsense that's going on. Okay? You guys, be blessed and be well, remember, stand up, speak up, and don't shut up. Take action. If you wanna get more active here locally, reach out to me. I'll catch you guys later. Peace, be blessed and be well.